Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Cohasset School Committee. Today is Wednesday, November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. We will begin our meeting with a roll call vote. Mr. Dial.
Present.
Mr. Evans.
Present.
Mr. Paul.
Present.
Mr. Scott.
Present.
Chairman Lasky. Present. We do have a forum, so we can begin our meeting. Please, all that are able to, stand for political allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are excited to have you, a full house tonight. And for those of you who are watching online, we appreciate your attendance and participation as well. Before we begin, I would like to congratulate our superintendent, who is now Dr. Sarah Shannon. So throughout this past year, Sarah has not only led our ship, steered our ship through a full academic school year and summer and into this school year, but has also completed her doctoral degree. So congratulations, Dr. Shannon.
Thank you. It feels very nice to be done.
All right, at this moment, if we do have any public comment, we are happy to take that at this time. You can public, make your public comment either in person, for those of you who are here in our audience, or you can participate via Zoom. And we'll continue to keep an eye on comments coming in. Don't see any public comments? Right, so now to our first block of business, we'll be invited guests. And this includes lots of field tripping and adventuring. And Dr. Shannon is going to do a brief introduction to all of this wonderful traveling that's been going on at school and as well as learning opportunities outside of the classroom.
Thank you very much. So we've been talking for a little over a year about field trips as a school committee and as a district. And we are continuing to work on that because we feel like field trips are a very important part of the learning experience for our students. Last year, we did an inventory of what field trips we currently have available. I would say actually, we have more now, which will be evident tonight. And since early October, our leadership team has been working on a district-wide field trip handbook that we're going to be looking to bring, to share with you towards the end of January. And that will help outline the purpose of field trips, types of field trips, guidelines and expectations for field trips at different grade levels, and the forms and all of the processes that go into planning a field. And so we're excited for that work. And some of the trips that you're going to hear about tonight are aligned with the work that we are doing. And so we'll look forward to bringing that to you soon. And one of the trips that you're going to hear about tonight are, is the trip that was to Washington DC. And I know that there's been a lot of conversation for a few years, actually, about the idea of an eighth grade Washington DC trip becoming something in the district. And I just wanted to share that Principal Smolletti and I have had conversations about that. And he is going to start with some very basic data gathering to see where things might be able to go or not with regard to that trip. He's going to start with stop it, because of course, the key piece of that is that we're able to stop it. And then he's going to look beyond that, depending on what the outcome of that is. So that is on the docket, more to come. And we will definitely have further conversation about field trips in January. But I'm excited to have so many folks here tonight to talk about either trips they've been on or trips people want to go on because they're all great experiences. And as I shared earlier, every piece of the field trip is part of a student's learning experience. And so I'm going to turn it over first to Ms. Alyssa Gittens-Carl and Ms. Jenna Bluen and their students to report their experience going to, going to Washington DC. Come on up.
Get to those two chairs.
So, and bring up whoever you want, and people could bring their chairs with them. And. Carl, are you good with me sharing? Like, do you want me to wait until you introduce something before I share screen? Or do you want to have me share and then you guys will all talk?
You can share and they can talk as they have questions or.
And you guys will tell me when to go to the next slide?
Oh, I know. I was hoping it was going to be like PowerPoint, so I apologize because for some reason I couldn't get it set as a PowerPoint, so we had to do it as.
Okay. That's okay, because now it looks like a PowerPoint.
So, so you can go to the next one. So this was actually, it wasn't just to go visit DC, but it was also to share in the civil rights history as well. So that's what all of this was about. And so kids are going to talk about some of the things that we got to see, some of the places we got to go. And then because we went during a nor'easter and then government shutdown, some of the challenges that we faced, so.
Well, before we get into what we did, a huge part of this was fundraising for the trip. We were very lucky to get a grant through the Cohasset Education Foundation for fourteen thousand dollars. So because of that, any student who needed financial assistance was given it. The cost of the trip was fourteen, or one thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars. And a lot of the money from CEF was used to subsidize some of that cost for students that needed it.
We originally had been given a grant from the, the Buildings and Bridges Initiative. That's when we first started talking about putting this trip together. They're an organization that gives money to those districts that want to do like an urban and suburban kind of collaboration. But we quickly realized that the amount of money that they were able to provide us was not going to cover the costs. So that's the CEF grant. As you can see, and forgive me, my voice is going. But as you can see, our itinerary was extremely booked, solid. From the moment we left Logan to the moment we sat, we ended in DC, it was like constantly going. I think I was telling Jenna, we were looking at how many steps we were doing every day. It was like twenty thousand steps each day. And I mean, from the moment we started to the moment we got back to the hotel. We didn't get back to the hotel the first day until nine thirty. So from five o'clock, well, some of the kids were left here Cohasset at four. To get to Logan at five thirty. So from five thirty until nine thirty that night, we were constantly going, going, going. And thank God, no, we did not fall asleep. But yes, our itinerary was huge. So this is just some pictures of us at the airport in both Logan and then when we landed. So kids, you guys can talk about.
Um, thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul. The first day.
Okay, so we first initially went to the Freedman Cemetery, which is what that photo is, the one below. I thought this was super informational just because I learned a lot of history that I didn't know. And I think it was also just, we had a lot of time to reflect on everything that, that happened throughout American history. And also, it was just amazing to be able to go with everyone and see all of that. So I would say that was definitely one of my highlights of the trip.
In Alexandria, Virginia, we stopped by the African-American Heritage Park, which was like a very beautiful site. It was very informational. There was also a dog, which was super fun, but. But it was, like, overall, this trip was very informational, but the site is very nice.
Us at the Capitol Building. Unfortunately, we weren't able to go inside the building because it was closed down. But of course, that didn't stop us from admiring just being in that space. We also, in that top photo, just when we were at the Supreme Court building, one of the women was coming out from just sponsoring another, I think it was an army, an army lawyer to become a JAG.
I asked her who she was.
And so we were like, oh, do you mind taking a picture with us? And she was like, sure, no problem. And so, so that type picture has her in that. I can't remember her name either, forgive us, but I just thought that was really cool that she stopped to tell us all about the experience of her going before the court.
This is us at the Washington Monument. We thought that this was really cool. I think we've seen it a few times, but when we went in, it was awesome because like, as you can see, like it reflects onto, like the sea down there. And then also when we got up close, you could really see how, how big it is. But yeah, that was, it was pretty cool to see that.
This was the George Washington's home, which was very cool. We got to go inside the home as well, but we also got to see his casket. That was like locked away, but it was really cool because we also saw, I think it was the graves of a lot of the slaves he had. That was, that was like good to learn, and it was just really cool to go inside the house.
So this is the World War II memorial. I must say, I don't really, I remember it. It was definitely informational for us, but we've seen, we've seen so many morals and so many monuments. And I think it really, like, put us in a mode of like, what has kind of shaped us to be where we are in like, like the history of America and of this world. So, yeah, and we got to see like a list of people who, that had passed away during that war, which was also very, it was very compelling to see.
All right, still talk some.
This is the Martin Luther King Memorial. Before we, we went over to see it, we learned a lot about the history of the memorial and the monument and about like the choices and the architecture of it. So I thought that was really interesting. And there was also like a bunch of quotes from MLK around the monument, which was good for us all to take in and see.
These were just some of the quotes that were on the wall that surround the monument. It's a Howard University. Howard University is one of the historically black colleges and universities. And we happened to find, or happened to see a former graduate of Cohasset High School there. And so her name is Brianna Love. And so she gave us a tour of the campus, which was really cool. She just graduated this past June. So to see her doing so well and to see her in her element as she was telling us all about the university and the campus as we walked around. So it was just a nice full circle moment. Then we went to Morgan State, which is another historical, historical black college and university. This is actually the biggest HBCU, and it's public. While Howard is private, Morgan is public. And so just to see how much money has been poured into the campus. The campus is so much bigger than what I remember it to be. And we happened to go into the bookstore, and it has a little cafe on the side. And the woman who's talking to the seniors, she's having to start talking to them about her experiences because she had been to Howard as an undergrad student and Morgan State as a graduate student. So she was telling them how she, you know, appreciated the experience that she had in both locations. And did just, the fact that she decided openly talking about like, you know, who are you all, where are you all from? And it was just nice to kind of get that kind of, you know, firsthand knowledge and for the kids to be able to, you know, ask those kind of questions. This is the Vietnam War Memorial. Hi, kids. And the three soldiers and the Women's Memorial. So these were, these were all some of the sites that we saw in the evening. And as you can see, the Washington Monument in the distance. And the Korean War Monument. The wall is really, really interesting because on that wall are all the faces of different people who passed away during the war. They also had a picture of a dog that was up there who had also passed away. And so it was kind of cool to see all those faces etched in the wall. And to, you know, to know that, you know, maybe, I know my dad was in the Korean War. So, you know, his face wasn't up there, but it would have been neat to just like go up there and see who you knew and who was a part of your family. I just thought that was kind of.
This was my personal favorite monument. It was really moving because like you see it in the movies and speeches and whatnot. So it's kind of crazy to see it in person, and it's also like way more massive than you would ever.
Day three, we went to the Holocaust Museum. This is a really sobering. To just walk through and to read the history and to see the pictures and to hear the firsthand accounts from different ones who actually lived through it or family members. It was just, it was, it was just heart wrenching. And one of those pictures is of all the shoes. It was like all the shoes that they collected. I mean, it just makes you think, wow.
So this is us at Arlington National Cemetery, where we also got the opportunity to see the changing of the, the guarding of the Unknown Soldier. And honestly, it was just so, it was amazing to see all the people that have either fought for this country in war, but also politically. And it impacted me, and I'm sure it impacted all of us standing over here.
And then we got to see the White House before the Eastway was demolished. So some of the challenges that we dealt with again was the fact that the government was shut down. So there were places that we didn't get a chance to see, didn't get a chance to go into. And I think too, because our itinerary was so jam-packed, I mean, we were going from minute to minute to minute. And it was just by the time we got back to, like, we were too exhausted to think about doing anything other than sleep. So, you know, just in thinking about ways to, to be more efficient going forward. We were thinking that after dinner, like everybody would eat dinner together, then that would be when we shut things down so that folk had a chance to really debrief all the stuff that they saw, to really talk about things, and to really connect with each other. So I felt like we were constantly going, that we never had that, like, that come together moment. And so I think, you know, when we're putting together an itinerary for the next trip, to just be mindful of those things. So, yeah. And then we had, I think the, one of the great things about this trip is, who was our tour guide? His name was John Ivory. It's the gentleman, the smaller of the two. I swear, he knew, he was like a walking encyclopedia, like he knew everything. Even when we got on the bus, you would think he would give us a chance to just like exhale? No, he's like, turn to the right, look at, this is such and such, turn to the left, this is such and such. So it was like every, like every step in DC, he knew. And he was giving us constant information about everything, which made it that much more enjoyable because you don't want to, you know, go to all these places and not hear about the history and not hear about all the different stories. But he had all the knowledge, and it was just amazing to kind of see it all up close and personal. So I thought it was a, I thought it was an amazing trip, and an amazing group of students. And, I mean, if we had to do it again, we would. Matter of fact, I think we've already planned next year's trip. The only thing though, we can't do it during the middle of the week. We have to go like Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, so that Saturday you have a chance to rest and relax because we came right back to work on Thursday, and the kids came right back to school. And I know some of them had a lot of homework, which was a lot because they were trying to get homework in at, you know, on the bus ride from place to place. And then when they got into their rooms to try to read or study for a test or whatever. So, I mean, if we can just think about how do we handle some of those logistics like that so that they don't feel overwhelmed and feel as though, oh, my gosh, like, this is a great trip, but I can't even really, you know, enjoy it because I have this assignment or that assignment. So just to have those kind of conversations as well, so. That's a great trip.
Okay, I'll let committee members, if they have any questions for our trip leaders or the students, Mr. Dial.
Thank you for doing that. As I, any regular tuner enters of the school committee, although I'm a huge fan of experiential learning, as we call it, and the committee as a whole. And taking time to take our students on an experience like this should not go unthanked. So thank you for doing that. That's, it's, it's a big, it's a big gift. We appreciate it. And it means a lot to students. I remember my trips from when I was in middle school, and those are, they just still, still stick with me. And DC is such an amazing place because, as our tour guide said, everywhere you go, there's, there's something just amazing there. I have the opportunity to spend a lot of time in DC, and unfortunately, I don't get to do half of what you guys did while you were there. So there's, there is a lot to learn, and even though you had a jam-packed agenda, it's, you know, it's stuff that everyone seems to have learned a lot and they, they can take a lot of fun. So thank you for doing it, and just from the, from the students. Did you guys have a great time and learn a lot and have fun? And would you go again?
Yes.
That's unanimous right there. So thank you for doing it. I'm glad you guys had a, had a great time.
Thank you. Mr. Evans?
Ditto. Walking around DC at night is awesome, right? Just with everything lit up, and it's a little bit warmer than there's a, like, it's just, so, so a lot of guys walk around DC with a pile of it. So hopefully, some of you will look back there.
Thank you, Ms. Bluen, and Ms. Gittens-Carl, for really delivering this experience to our students. I personally want to see our kids go to DC every year. I think it's super important that at least cohort students every year from Cohasset goes down to the Ocean Station. And Superintendent Shannon, for preface the presentation with the remarks regarding our efforts to try and ensure that that happens. But it's a really big undertaking for faculty and staff to take our kids down to, you know, anywhere outside of the district. So thank you for doing that, and thank you to, I, were there, there must have been other chaperones that were there, we never know. That's a lot. That's a lot. And so everyone should really understand how much that is, if you have other people's children and you're in a city that, you know, not everyone knows, it's a good deal. So thank you for doing that for them. And I think being exhausted at the end of the day is a sign of a great school trip. That's every time I was on one, it was like a death march through wherever we were going to, it's non-stop, there's so much to see. And you didn't even, you know, you just took the iceberg, right? But great itinerary. You guys like planned it really well, saw some great things, and it seems like you guys had a really good experience. So thanks a lot. Thanks for doing that. Overall, I can't add much more than that, but I do have to say, it is really impressive how much you, you guys got into this trip. It was just three days, and two of those you were traveling. It's just awesome that you were able to accomplish, and I won't be a school committee member a year from now, so I won't have an excuse to come on the trip, but I do want to be back to DC. So this is just like completely confirmed by. My, when my brother's in eighth grade.
I'd like to add my thanks to Ms. Bluen and Ms. Gittens-Carl. I've also led a group of students through DC for several days. It was exhausting, and you all hit all of the best things. And I feel like what I've heard from you was that you were moved by a lot of what you saw. And I think that's what happens when you're in, in that city, that it's just so rich with history. I also would just like to highlight that you met people. You met people that don't live in Cohasset. You met people who were doing some really interesting things and engaged with you. And I think that that's also one of the wonderful things that happens with travel is, is meeting new people who live in a different way, even if it's still the United States and only a quick, plain ride away, that sort of seeing, getting to know the people. It's really a neat thing too, when having them be part of your experience in the Capitol. So thank you so much. Thank you, students, for being here as well.
Quick question, the Holocaust Memorial, they still assign you a white beginning of the tour?
Yes.
That was really impactful.
They also have someone who lived in, who sits there, you can have a conversation.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, but we missed that person.
All right, well, sorry, in a somber note, but I was just curious about that, because that was, that, that museum is, I hope that guy, that had a really big impact. They do a really job with that museum.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great job, guys, some job.
And now we have the Cohasset Middle School Quebec Trip, twenty twenty-six.
Madame Sanchez is out of retirement to help support this trip.
Did the Montols offer and brought her in, she's still, still there?
I still exist. There's life after. Yes, if you don't know me, I, well.
Sure. Hi, Chris, Madame Sanchez.
If you don't know me, I'm Madame Sanchez, and I just recently retired, and I was here at Cohasset for twenty years. So miss it a lot.
Before she retired, she said, Bob, you have got to make sure this Quebec trip happens at once.
This is before we knew who the new teacher would be, so Bob stepped forward, so.
And Jen Scott, who's the new middle school teacher for our class, and I'm familiar with Cohasset, is, is co-leading the trip as well. We're both going to be chaperones to go along. And she's a, a great resource as well from different trips. My, I've been before you guys as well, all the different trips we've done. So we're, we're continuing on what we've done in the past. There's no significant major changes, although, you know, after hearing their, their itinerary and their weekday sort of dates, the switch to the Thursday, Saturday trip, having Sunday as that refresher day is key. And so, you know, they've, they've learned that the hard way too. But we're really looking forward to this one. We're going a little bit later in the season than what we've done in the past, mainly because the, well, it's a little bit better, but also a little more opportunities. There's a dinner cruise that the kids always love. We get to see kids from other areas. And it's talk about meeting different people. That's one of the things that, that just the kid really enjoys, just meeting kids their own age, from different parts of the country, socially for a couple hours under supervision. And we're, so we're really looking forward to doing those as well. It's weather dependent as always, so if you don't, aren't able to do that, there's a new event there. First Nations light.
Yeah, if the, I mean, usually we do, do the cruise, but last year we did have an issue because we didn't have enough groups. But it was the Wendaki First Nation Light Show, which is an amazing light show that's hopefully could get that in. It was on Chronicle a couple weeks ago, or a week ago, but, um, yeah, that, we saw that last year, so that was quite, quite beautiful part of the trip. So that's possibility. It's not a sure thing. They do the Sugar Shack, which we consider like really important for the kids because it's part of the economy, part of the culture. And they do the processing, how they process the maple sugar, and then funnel dance, dancing, folk dancing as well. Um, and then some of the education, of course, it's the oldest city um, in the, 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 uh, the, one of the older cities in the, in Americas. So they see a lot of historical background as far as the walking, they do walking tour. Um, this is the citadel, which is, has, you know, the remnants of the city. Um, they do Monoracy Falls, which is the waterfalls that are like twenty minutes outside the city. Um, as far as also educational preparation, the kids do research on the sites they're gonna see. Um, and present to the class. We do like a journaling where either they write down in their notebooks or um, electro, uh, they can, you know, take some notes. And using the French, of course, the language, um, they're gonna be doing journaling. And then when they come back, uh, they decide we do some writing around critiquing what they liked, what they didn't like um, in the French, in the target language. Using passé composé, hopefully, because it's focused, uh, eighth grade and focused on using the past tense. And you know, what did I see? What did I like? Where did I go? Et cetera. So.
One of the nice things, this, the hotel is gonna be in the Walt City itself.
Was it the Royale?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Sign them before I let them know which hotel it is. I haven't been there before.
Very nice. Um, flat, uh, flat, last Royale?
Yep.
So it's a very nice hotel in the city. So you could do more walking, with the tour buses, there's more walking involved um, if you're staying in, in the city.
And probably the best thing is we have uh, deposits for all twenty-one eighth grade students so far. So all of them want to take part. Um, we're waiting for the final numbers from Situate, which is gonna, on that little numbers sheet you have here, bring us way down on the cost level for us. So we're hoping to get down to, you know, seven hundred, even less, which is, you know, when you hear the costs for these trips. Uh, this is one of the best banks of the bucks for what they get at the time. So really completely.
Yeah, we did partner with Situate the last couple of years and it's been great with them. The kids, you know, been wonderful, the kids intermingle and just nice to um, connect with the teachers too. So it was really good. Um, this year we have, because we only have twenty, you have twenty-one. Um, so because the buses are, you can only get the bus fifty, fifty. So you can't get small buses. So that's, you know, environmentally and cost wise that we thought that was a good, a choice that we made a couple of years ago to go with Situate. So that's worked out great. Um.
And perspective of your time, do you guys have any questions? So you guys can move on to the innings as well?
We'll start, Mr. Dial.
So I'm gonna let the chaperoning questions go from Sir Collins. I just know those are coming. Uh, Mr. Lynn, thank you for, for doing this and and Mrs. Sanchez, thank you for, for coming back to, to do this. Um, that's, I mean, this, this, we are blessed that the district have teachers who are committed so much that they even come out of retirement to continue to, to help our, help our students.
I'm buying your dinner afterwards.
So, Ms. Lynn, do you, do you speak French?
I actually did French in college, so I, I, I can communicate pretty much anything, but just don't talk back.
Okay.
So it's, that's, that's, that's the problem.
That's the, your French will improve after the trip, no doubt.
It, it does, for a few minutes, yeah.
And Jen Scott, of course, this will be.
So that, that's fantastic. So I mean, and this is a, this is a well-worn path, so we've done this before. Um, and uh, I guess we've got the cost, the cost is, could be down at the low seven hundred, which I know I appreciate because we're families of our cost burdens. And that's a theme lately, unfortunately. Um, and then you've got the, the timing down, so I actually have no, no questions. I, I'm a huge supporter of these trips, as I just said, and I want to just thank you for uh, for stepping up and volunteering. One administrative um, note, though, for Dr. Shannon and, and Ms. Owen. Um, if we, Madame Sanchez is coming in, I guess not as an employee this time, so I don't know if there's any eyes to cross or eyes to dot or t's to cross on insurance or anything like that.
She's not coming with us. No, no, she's just coming out here just for the presentation because I knew she was gonna be motionless.
Well, then you could, you could scratch that.
Well, I have to say when, when I did tell my food is, I'm gonna be retiring, getting older, I have to move on. The kid said, what about the Quebec trip?
Well, we appreciate you coming here to, to, to do that, so.
I mean, I would definitely volunteer if, if they need me, if I was in the, if I was around. I may not be around.
Well, well, they, they.
I mean, I may, I may be, you're wrong.
You're not gonna go forward with it, Mike. We really didn't do this before.
She's in an apartment in France, okay? So she's doing well.
Excellent. So, thank you very much.
It's Travis.
Biggest fan of foreign language education and the difference between, you know, being in a classroom answering questions and then being street level and, and being universal languages, two different things. So I love that we're getting eighth graders that experience a lot of times. You know, students don't get that experience to high school. So you know, hey, you're on the street now, you have to go to your shop, you have to buy something, you have to take a waiter, you have to ask for more water. These are the things that are, you know, central, right, to communicating. And it's not just taking tests and writing essays, it's, you know, going out there and having some fun, but also getting yourself a little bit, you know, over your skis a little bit, right? You have to be, you know, have to.
To, you know, to.
Yeah, you have to try and you have to try and so uh, uh, awesome and a great place to go, so uh, but, thank you. Thank you for doing.
So this one's a, a tried and true, well-established trip and Mr. Erlinson, you're a veteran in terms of bringing, um, bringing our students uh, on, on to various destinations. But I always just ask these questions in the planning, uh, as a matter of course, to make sure, but it looks like you had um, articulated the chaperone ratio in the packet. It's, it looks like there's twenty, twenty kids, two chaperones, so.
From Cohasset and Situate's gonna supply the rest. All depends on the twenty or the thirty. And so as you see the numbers, they'll have a couple of, I don't think we're anticipating any more Cohasset teachers doing. Uh, so right now it's to Ms. Scott and I.
Okay, so probably like the, around the max that we'd wanted, one to ten, but like, I mean, you, you know what you're doing and I, you know, but uh, you know, so if anyone wants to do it, um, it, it would be great. But you know, I'm sure that that's manageable and I, you know, I defer to your, uh, to your judgment on that. Um, uh, with regards to passports, yes, they're gonna be collected when we get over.
We always collected it. They don't always have a passport. They have a scrape, but also there's other documentation that can be used. And so we collect that as we get on the bus, we hold on to that, we get to the customs, we give it to them, as soon as they're done with it, we take it back. So they don't have any opportunity to uh.
Lose it and get it stranded, great.
Yes.
Um, don't need any, uh, yeah, don't need any unplanned trips to the consulate or anything like that, so.
Yes, those, those are the things that keep me up at night and we make sure we deal with those.
No, I know, and you're, you're good at this. You're, you're, like I said, you're a pro. Um, and I just, um, and then in the hotel, um, overnight, is there some sort of security in the hallway?
Security in the hallway. This is the new hotels. I haven't been there before, so I don't know, is it worked out the same sort of way we're all on the floor?
It's, um, we're, we're on one floor and we have a separation of like the girls and one, one, I mean, it's not ring, but half, and we kind of, even if we might have to change rooms because the, the chaperones would be like, you know, in, we have male, female chaperones, so we'll be situated in the right place. Uh, we do have security. There is like security from eleven PM till six AM. So there's on, on floor, yeah.
And if we do a drop rate, we'll be just as tired as the DC trip.
It's the same thing, go, go, go.
No, absolutely. All of this is just sort of abundance of caution type of questions to make sure. It's more than anything just to announce to everyone that it's all thought out and planned. So we manage everyone's anxieties. Uh, I mean, I have anxiety in my head, going on a trip yet, so. Um, but um, but it's a great experience and I know you, um, you both have done this number of times. So, and thank you as well for delivering this experience to the kids, just like I think, for those who blew in and um, Mr. Carl earlier. It's just, it's a wonderful, it's like to be able to deliver my kids, so thank you. Thanks for answering my questions.
Mr. Spock, ready to go? Um, is there questions?
Obviously, I love that this is continuing. Um, I guess my one question, this is more just out of curiosity, like including, like had a merging with Situate, is that something new this year or started?
I wanna say two, two years ago. So we've done two, this is our third year with Situate. Um, reason was, was that we have a small group of French students, uh, population was like twenty. So in interest was, you know, about twenty students for the last couple of years. Next year's gonna be forty. So we make, we won't go with Situate next year because we'll fill the bus. It's basically the, the idea of like, you know, we wanted to make it affordable for students. And yeah, so it's the, 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 combining the schools has been a great experience. It's been really, really great. The kids, um, they do, we keep them like separated but together. So we keep our kids, even on the bus, the, our Cohasset kids are together because they, you know, fewer, but it's maybe twenty-five, twenty. So we keep them together, but yet they do intermingle according to how they feel about it. As far as like staying on the, the hotel, we're all together Cohasset and they're all together Situate.
No, no mixing of rooms.
No, no, not at all. Because we know our kids, obviously. It's a very good experience. If that answers your question.
No, that's great, yeah.
I'll just add my thanks. Um, I have a child who graduated from the um, the Quebec trip and it was a win all around. Um, she did come home absolutely exhausted, um, but filled with great stories. So I'm glad that this tradition continues um, for our middle school students. And um, thank you, Mr. Erlinson and Ms. Scott, who's not here, but will be um, having the, the lifting, that, doing that human's work, um, traveling with children. And um, Madame Sanchez always would like to have you back here um, and to benefit from your expertise tonight. We do need to um, take a vote, so I'll be looking for a motion to prove um, this trip as presented.
So.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, we will call vote, Mr. Dial.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Vito?
Aye.
It's just one for you.
Hi, Jan Lasky, aye.
Um, have a wonderful trip.
Thank you.
Wow.
We'll see you in May or June if you guys want to come back.
Yes, oh, we'd love that. And finally, on Field Trip Central, we have um, the Cohasset High School South Carolina Girls Cross Trip. Do you want to be able to share your presentation?
Please.
Here it comes.
Alright, hi everyone. Steve Rattan, the Athletic Corrector, I'm here with Coach Derek Connerdy. And we wanted to tonight discuss the opportunity of potential trip for the girls lacrosse team to South Carolina to um, play and practice. And to give you a little background, three years ago, our, our head coach here, um, Billy Bitter, um, after coaching here at Cohasset, he's since relocated and now lives in Charleston, South Carolina, where he coaches um, and works. So he's reached out since he's relocated to say, would you ever wanna come down here and play? We can help coordinate some other opportunities while you're here. And um, we've always been interested in the idea, but now we've kind of picked up some momentum and had some interest meetings. And with all the hard work Coach Connerdy has put into it, are in a place to come here and share the information with you and see if it's a possibility um, for a future trip.
Alright, well, thank you for the opportunity. I'm Tara Connerdy. So when Billy reached out uh, through email, I thought this would be just such a great opportunity for the girls. It's terrific competition, but beyond that, it's a chance of team bonding, to travel. And so just like Steve said, we reached out to the kids first, then the families to just generate and see what level of support. And we had a lot of excitement. So um, the next step was to put um, proposed itinerary and come forward here and um, get your thoughts on traveling with our lacrosse team. So the two games that we secured are with Bishop England High School and that's Billy Bitter's team. Uh, they're both competitive. The next um, team would be Oceanside Academy. So we would leave on a Sunday of April vacation and we would play Monday, Tuesday, and then come home on Wednesday. So this itinerary is uh, just proposed. Um, we just wanted to go over um, for the families too as well, just like the travel logistics, the distances. Again, um, when we're down there, the sightseeing opportunities. So the first day we'd fly down would be Sunday of April vacation. Um, and then just kind of exploring Charleston a little bit. Um, you know, Billy had made some recommendations in terms of hotels to stay at, um, sights to see down there, do a little shopping. Um, on the back page, there's all sorts of lists of what we could see. And then that um, night, either um, they've offered to host uh, the teams that were playing, host a team dinner either before or after our games. Um, so that might be that Sunday night or we'd wait to play them the next day. And then either go out to dinner or um, a family has offered to host us for dinner after, which is nice. It's, it's nice for these kids also to meet um, other high school lacrosse players in a different state. So the girls were very excited about that. So Monday would be the first game and it's in the afternoon uh, because they're not on vacation. So um, they're in school at this point. So Monday we do a little sightseeing, go down to maybe the aircraft carrier, walk around Patriot Point Naval and Maritime Museum. Uh, it's all a lot of walking too, which is great uh, in sightseeing. I think I've never been to Charleston, but anybody that has, I think it's a very friendly, you know, city that we can see a lot. Uh, the first game would be at four thirty against uh, Billy's team, Bishop England, again, competitive um, program. And then we would either um, have dinner with them or have a dinner somewhere close to the hotel. The next day, uh, we were probably thinking of going to Sullivan's Island Beach uh, and then exploring that. Then we would play at four thirty against Oceanside. And then same, either um, go to dinner as a team or they offer to host us as well. Uh, and then we would hopefully go on uh, Charleston ghost tour because the girls seemed very interested in that. Mr. Rattan, he's had experience with that as well. Um, and then we would leave Wednesday morning to return. So just some of the recommended tourist attractions are listed below. And then we did a budget kind of snapshot for the families, just so that they would have, you know, a little bit of perspective of how much we were thinking that this would cause. Um, we are planning the boosters of trying to offset the price with fundraising and um, creating those opportunities starting as soon as, if we've got approval uh, for this trip, so that we could make more economically um, you know, um, affordable for our families. So, does anybody have any questions or comments about a trip?
Thank you. Um, Mr. Dial, when are we gonna start it?
So, thank you for, for putting this together. Uh, I think it's a good idea and this may be, I think, um, Celeste and Mr. Collins are the old timers here, I suppose. Um, but I don't think we've ever done a sports themed um, trip, have we? I can't recall, I have a, a movie one of those. Yeah, I think, I think it's a, I think it's a great idea. I did one um, in high school and uh, against, these are the things I, I wrote on the phone with them. And one of the kids actually told a joke on the bus that I still tell to this day. Um, because it's, it's one of those experiences. So I'm, I'm super happy that you guys are, are putting this together. And I think it's gonna be a great experience for, for the girls, definitely a team bonding experience. I love that you put in some, some educational activities and, and being able to take in, you know, it, it, we, we talk about going to different countries and different cultures and so on. It's, it, this is not quite that, but it is different. Um, it's a, it's a different, uh, different area. So there's, there's lots to learn about uh, seeing different people in different spots and then throw in some competition. I think this is a great idea. I've already anticipated where I go with these things. And that's, you're thinking about um, the financial burden on families because, you know, there's, there's a lot of these opportunities and eventually while it's run dry. So um, making sure that it's, it's affordable is, is huge. Uh, so anyway, I'm, I'm super happy you put this together. Uh, it seems like there's some more details to be, be ironed out, but um, you know, I, I have no objection to, to, to proceedings. So thank you for, for, for doing what you've got.
And to your point, I had the opportunity of taking another high school to Georgia during April vacation. And when we did reflection, when the kids graduated, their number one memory was that trip. And it was about the team bonding, the bus rides, the flight. So when this opportunity came available, I just thought, um, given that experience, it really is nice to be able to have that opportunity, so.
Uh, nothing really hugely more to add outside of, you know, connecting with other people in other places, so we value it, especially now. So uh, just getting friends that are in different difficult, different states. So uh, hope it's a lot of fun.
Thanks. Uh, so similar questions, but not the same because they're not internationals, so there's no passports we got to worry about and uh, it's all girls. Don't worry about segregating genders. But um, I am wondering about um, if you can just think about having like a security detail of some sort posted on the hallway. They're older, they're high school, but they're still children. Um, and they're, you know, outside of the state. So I think it would be nice if we could ensure that someone's there to make sure no one's wandering out of their room in the middle of the night, disappearing on us. Um, so um, I, I, I'm sure that there are services that get to do that. I, I think every one of our trips does it. So um, I just think of that, but uh, it would, you know, it's gonna be great. And I'd love to see all the, I love that you've worked in, because it's educational as well as that, but it's great, so it's great. Charleston is really a fun place to go. So and a lot of people don't, they kind of overlook it, I think, sometimes. And it's, it's an awesome city, you know, um, a lot of history there. So I'm not sure our resident Southerner would agree that uh.
You know what I'm speaking of, I've only been there once. It was like years and years ago and all I remember from eating Charleston is it smelled funny. But that was, that was, that was just that particular time and it was on a school trip, so that's, that explains it. Could've been me.
Yes, yes.
That smells nice.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Well, hopefully they'll have some uh, different indelible memories of our passion and now our experiences. But uh, but uh, thank, thank you for doing this. I appreciate it. But you definitely just make sure that there's some sort of security detail on the hallway.
And as far as chaperones, uh, the coaching staff, the JV coach and then the assistant varsity coach will um, be there as well. So we'll have three adults there.
That's right, yeah, three adults, I think, with the total amount of. That's right, yeah, three adults, I think, with the total amount of.
So we have 20 returning varsity players as of right now. So it looks like it'll probably be around 20, between 20 and 24 kids.
Yeah, so that's great. That's great. That's a good race. That's manageable. All right, so thank you so much. I don't really have anything to add, but I think it sounds like a great idea. Also, like having it before your vacation. And to.
Definitely appreciation for bringing this forward, taking the initiative. Sounds like a nice opportunity for some team buildings to travel and some competition outside of the league and getting ready for the season ahead. So again, we'll be seeking a motion, but I'm wondering if it's with the contingency that the security is procured. Can we leave that way, or would you like to make a suggestion?
Do we have an internal policy on these trips? Do we have like just a bona fide document, like pre-approved a trip that is with these contingencies, like?
No, I'm the one that just asks the questions all the time. So, but I see Dr. Shannon, dawn on her head that she would make sure.
Yeah, we would make sure it's secured. Absolutely.
So I'll move to approve the trip as presented. Second.
All right. We'll call vote, Mr. Dial.
Aye. Let's see.
That works.
More language. More language.
Aye.
Mr. Adams.
Aye.
Jen Lasky, aye.
Have a great trip.
Thank you.
That'd be exciting.
Thank you.
Love that. Startup tradition.
Thank you.
We are moving on to Section D, the superintendent to the board from Dr. Jalen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So as many in our community are aware, all districts across the state, including ours, are facing very difficult budgets, despite the work we do to close the financial gap, so we can maintain a budget, a balanced budget. But we are very grateful for the work that our senators and our representatives, specifically Senator, Representative Machino, have done to bring about change and state funding for public education. And we're grateful that Governor Healy is listening. Over the course of the last month, Governor Healy's staff have been holding hearings across the state to listen to districts, town municipalities, concerned community members and students, speaking out to the impact of our underfunded budgets and ongoing reductions, and how that those are impacted, impacting our schools. Though we are always grateful for the ongoing collaborative efforts for the town of Cohasset in funding our schools, the problem is much bigger than what is happening in our singular community. Last night, I was able to speak to our specific concerns in Cohasset. And having heard what my colleagues have shared and seen how many people are bringing forth concerns, I have hope that the governor will hear us and start to make some changes. I want to thank those of you who attended last night and folks in the community and our teaching staff as well. Who listened last night to hear the concerns across the state. I will continue to keep all of you informed as the governor makes decisions and moves forward with her next steps. I think it's a very big deal that she had five listening sessions across the state on this topic. It is a big issue. It's a, it's a concern in every type of district. And changes needs to be made. And I'm hoping that as a result of the hearings that she held, we'll start to see some movement. Also, last night was our 2025 National Honor Society induction ceremony. It was wonderful. It is always a special event where many of our students are honored for their dedication to character, scholarship, leadership, and service. I want to congratulate all of the students who were inducted and look forward to seeing all the work that they continue to do over the next year or two, as they work to maintain their academic standing and the difference in their communities. And congratulate to their parents and caregivers as well, who support them along this journey. Last meeting, I also shared an update on our postseason sports activities. While only football continues on, I want to congratulate both soccer teams and our field hockey team for the hard work they've been within the season. Though their seasons did not end the way that they wanted them to, they all had a phenomenal year. They never gave up. If anyone's looking for something to do on Saturday at 1:30, if we were in the football team, continues their journey, they're in the final four, hoping to get to the Superbowl, and they will play against Northridge, and we wish them great success. Last week, we were also able to meet, the leadership team met with the Cohasset Community Assistance Fund. This is a new 501(c)(3) in our community. It's a great group. It's a great organization. They are newly, they're a newly formed, community-based nonprofit organization that seeks to provide immediate, short-term financial relief for Cohasset residents in need. And given their new status, they're both seeking contributions from the community and awareness, really, for those who need support. Their organization is 100% confidential, with the exception of the intake team, and they've already begun to provide supports and services. They are very much interested in supporting our families. And we are very much looking forward to partnering with them to get the support that some of our families may need in a short-term way. We know that some folks will have longer-term needs. Their goal is to be the bridge between the need and the longer-term solutions. And so you can find more information about their fund on their website. And it's the, it's www.cohassetcaf.org. And finally, I want to remind everybody that next Wednesday starts our Thanksgiving recess, so we will have an early release on Wednesday, no school on Thursday, Friday. And I hope everybody has a wonderful holiday.
Thank you. Any questions? Dr. Shannon on her report. Let's move ahead to teaching and learning from Dr. Collins.
So you have, in front of you, the new policy, the middle school pathway exploration policy. So you were given this the last meeting, or your first reading, or second. You have any questions? This policy has been presented to us to ensure that our middle school students have the opportunity to look at alternative-type programming, such as VOTEC and Norfolk Aggie. And so we need this policy in place, requirement by the state, so that we will, in fact, make sure that we follow their process. Questions?
Actually, I just have one question. It's not about the policy, but just about educating families and students as to that possibility, and whether or not there's only one intake point into the VOTEC and the Aggie schools, whether it's as a ninth grader, or whether or not that could happen at any point in a student's career in the high school, to transfer from Cohasset High School to one of the other vocational schools.
They can. I think it's a matter of what kind of space is available. But the first real entry point is ninth grade.
So it's not a guaranteed opening, should you decide to go that route at a different point? So that, that early education is really important.
Yes, it is. And it's extremely popular, right? They're coveted, coveted seats.
Yes. Any other questions or comments? So we will take a vote on this.
I guess my one question. I think the way that you described this at the last meeting is we were already kind of doing this. We just have to establish this to ensure compliance with it. I guess my question, and this is just from being detached from it, like, what are, I know that the policy mentions like having counselors deliver lessons, but is there anything like beyond that that we kind of introduce?
So I think I did talk about the fact that the schools come and visit, and then there's opportunities for the students to go to the schools. South Shore VOTEC offers a bus that will take them and give them a tour during the school day. Norfolk Aggie's a little bit different. They still will provide opportunities, and any student can go tour, but they don't do the large tours. And I'm not sure if that's going to change. It's the, this new policy. And then there's opportunities within the curriculum where teachers, where guidance at the middle school does a whole career piece. In fact, I happened to walk in today when we were doing our learning walk, and the students were presenting on their possible career choice. And they had done the Mass higher 360. So they looked at what they're, what they looked like in the survey that they took, as to what would be something that would be good for them to do, or based on their skills. And so they were doing presentations, and it was really great to see what they had to say. So those are the things that we make sure those were happening also, not because of this. These are just the pieces that we have to make sure that we are compliant.
There are no other comments? Two budget resources?
I have just a couple, I have a couple of other updates.
Fantastic. I'm so sorry.
So I want to talk a little bit about the topic. We had Dr. Richard, who is a professor from Brown. He is a psychologist who also has a private practice. We have connected with him and we, through a CEF grant. So we were very fortunate that Mrs. Alyssa Giffen-Carl worked with myself to write a grant two years ago for the CEF, to bring in Dr. Blue, to help teachers and families with learning to new strategies of behavior, and how to create an atmospheric home that's conducive to a positive experience in education, and then also at school. And so they presented to the elementary teachers the year before, and it was with great positivity from all of them. He was really good about addressing some of their concerns around learning new strategies of how to handle behaviors. And then the other component of it was that to have a parent presentation. So we had that last week, last Thursday. We had 51 people RSVP, say they were coming, but it was kind of a gloomy night. So we got about 25, I would say, parents and caregivers. And he presented on some strategies, and also the importance of self-care for themselves as parents, because it can be challenging to raise your, your children. So it was a wonderful presentation, and we were really thrilled to have him. And then he's also going to do some work with our guidance houses and therapists on December 12th, that are professional development day. That's one of the other things that he does. He does a lot of professional development for community programs, such as Boys and Girls Club and other educational institutions like ourselves. So he's really a nice resource. So we're really thankful to the CEF for providing us the funding to do that. And so our feedback has been good, and I look forward to seeing him again on the 12th. And then also, just as I stated, that we had a learning walk today with our leadership. We do that on a regular basis and walk through the buildings, looking for a specific look for, so we can look for trends and patterns and what's happening. And we've been doing it with our math and reading specialists also, or department chairs. But we changed the model a little bit this year for our math and reading specialists. And usually, we do it within the context of our meeting. But we talked about how that time is too constrained for us to really get a good sense. And so the math specialists are going to do three full-day learning walks, which allows us to really look at more classrooms. And so we did our first one the other day, and it was really wonderful. We really concentrated on elementary, because there were some scheduling things at the middle school, high school that we couldn't quite coordinate. But it was a really wonderful day to be able to look at what's going on. And one of the things that we decided to do also was, we do have look-for's as a district, but at the same time, we thought it was really important for us to look for math look-for's. And so we came up with some options and actually asked teachers to weigh in on what they thought was the most important things. And so they decided that we would focus on learning community and student-centered approach to instruction. And within that was, what does the learning community include? Things like, all students are included in mathematical conversations and provide opportunities for meaningful discourse. Students listen to and interact with mathematical ideas with classmates and several others. But then the other area was student-centered approach to instruction, so that it includes students' shared discoveries, strategies, observations, and solutions with the class. Students actively engage in regular thing, pair shares, partners, small group work, and collaboration, and other, I won't read all of that. But, so those are the lenses for which we looked, and it allows us to have the opportunity to go through the classrooms, have common focus areas, then look at the alignment across grade level, from grade level to grade level. And it allows us to, to think about one of those transitions between the schools, which are conversations we've had. But I think having a full day and being able to get into as many classrooms as we did, it allowed for some really rich discussions, and we had a couple of opportunities to debrief. And then we will send out a memo to the staff and let them know the trends and patterns we saw. And there were some amazing things happening in the classroom. And the language, and the math language and vocabulary, the kindergarten first graders use is extraordinary. And so it was, it was really great. So we'll continue, we'll do two more, and then we'll do the same with the reading specialists. A nice little enhancement to our learning that we've been doing. It is. That's it.
Questions for Dr. Collins?
Dr. Collins, can you refresh our reflection? Because I believe these learning blocks started during your tenure. Didn't they, didn't we start doing them?
Yep. Yes, we did seven years ago.
You conceived them, yeah. So, and you've been.
Dr. Sullivan and I, yeah.
Yes. And you, and you've, you've gone on every one of them, I think.
Pretty much, yes.
I wanted to highlight that, because they are incredibly impactful and effective collaboration tools, and definitely leads to more innovation within the district. And having those look-for's and sharing them with everyone, it's, it's, I think it certainly contributed to the success in the district. And I think that you are owed some credit there, because it's something that I think you could easily, like, take for granted, especially if you're like an end user, if you're a family. Certainly, if you're a student, you would have no idea, right? But it's, I think it's a, it's a really important part, it's a sort of fabric for our district. So thank you for bringing that to the district and for all you do there. And it's, it's nice to hear about.
It's one of my favorite things to do.
I know.
I get to see students, but we also get to talk about education. It's wonderful. So thank you for the acknowledgement.
I would just add my thanks for that, because I think it is really hard to prioritize taking time out of your primary roles to reflect on practice. But it is one of the most powerful ways to grow as a teacher. And so even just that stepping away from what you're doing and watching other people do it, and seeing, you know, what other, what else is out there is incredibly powerful and happy that you're leading that initiative and that the, the district is making time for that. All right, budget resources and governance. We are starting with a gift. It's always a nice way to start.
So we're looking just for an acceptance of a gift or donation from Megan Elder. It puts a gift in a fund that she'd like to put in support of the class at Middle School Student Council. And here that's a student council donation from a parent or caregiver to support the club, giving them $40. So just looking for acceptance of that. And a thank you to her for that donation.
Move to accept. Second.
Mr. Dial?
Aye. All right.
Jen Lasky, aye. And thank you, Ms. Elder, for that support of our student council. It is sometimes the government, a government bug that we want our children to get, or at least some civic action, being active in their communities. That's a lovely gift. Thank you. All right, office hours. Mr. McCollum, I'm gonna let you speak to this a little bit. Or if you'd like to, I can, I feel like you know.
I'm happy to.
Okay.
So I had met with some parents between our last regular meeting, tonight's regular meeting. And one of the ideas that arose out of the conversation was that it might be helpful for the school committee to have office hours in a public location. You know, this was an initial idea, so there weren't like a lot of details about it in terms of like, how frequent that would be, or where they would be, you know? Perhaps, you know, there was some loose talk about maybe doing it, there's like a community room in the library that, you know, hang out in for, you know, an hour or something like that. Just because they felt that it might be nice for people to be able to talk to their school committee members in a more informal setting, sort of neutral ground, and have, you know, not be sort of removed from the formality, the structure of the school committee meeting itself. So we would obviously need to avoid any sort of quorums for these discussions, but it might be a great way for folks to share insight or concern and to help improve our district. I thought it sounded like a great idea. I informed that I'm merely 20% of the committee, and it'd be something that we would need to talk about and conceive as a group. So. we would need to talk about and conceive as a group. So I raise it, I raised it with our chair and I am putting it to the group for consideration. I don't know that any decisions or resolutions need to be reached tonight, but it's sort of an introductory, you know, concept that I want everyone to consider. I would be, I'd be happy to do the office hours as much as, I'm, I'm pretty flexible and I know other folks aren't as flexible with me just because I work like down the street in the library. So I, I would make myself available as much as possible, but other people might have interest in it as well, or people might feel that there may be some unintended consequences that, you know, I haven't thought about as well. So putting it out there for some thought.
Thank you, Mr. McCallum, for bringing that forward. Open the floor for any questions, comments, thoughts, if there are any.
So I'll, I'll start. I very much appreciate hearing from people. Like I, that's, that's, it's hard to do this job when you, you can't, you don't have a lot of feedback. So things to, anything that helps facilitate feedback is, is positive. That desire for me runs smack against the idea that this is a, in a way, volunteer position. And, you know, I have, as we all do, demands, professional demands, family demands and, and the like. And as far as having reserved times or expectations of reserved times beyond what we already do with committees, subcommittees, negotiating committees and the like, just the idea of tacking on another one seems daunting to me. That said, I guess what I would say is that I don't know that we need a formal office hours. I think we are all elected officials, we have town emails, we have a, a, a way to communicate with the community. If we want to be with people, we, we should. If people want to talk to us, they should, they should reach out. I, I, for one, would welcome any sort of commentary. And if someone wants to meet with me, I'd be happy to do it on an ad hoc basis. But I, I don't, I don't love the idea of a kind of, and it, it maybe this is, maybe I'm just reading into what I assume office hours would be, which would be kind of like a formally sanctioned, okay, you know, we, we will always be here at this hour to this hour on such and such date. I think that creates expectation, that's, gives it too much demands. All of that, so I guess that's initial reaction.
Mr. Collins?
Yeah, I mean, we, when I was in select, we kind of truly banged around this idea too, because I mean, I, I do think it is, it is nice for the public to have, hey, you know, here's a carved out time, you can talk with somebody, it is informal, you don't have to go through an email back and forth, match up schedules. But we ran into the exact problem that, that Mr. Dian was talking about, which is if we have, let's say, one hour a week and we have some sort of rotation invariably, right, the, the burden falls, you know, unequally on one person, and then you're potentially sitting on expectation that you can't meet. So I, I, I'm both very for it and very worried about it at the same time. And you know, I, I I don't know, let's talk more about it, to see how it looks. Because the, the other thing is I also don't want to give the sensation to parents like, okay, office hours and that's it, right? There's a lot of people that won't be able to make it, right? So I also don't want to necessarily put it at a time where only some people can, can reach anyway. That's really not equitable either. But I don't think you can really solve that. So look forward to kind of hatching that more, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I guess I will say, even though you're still working on town email, like, obviously people are welcome to reach out to me and even though I will not be here in a few months, like, I am here and I, I want to talk to people. There's times that I want to be the one to reach out and sometimes I'm like, oh, like, am I overstepping? And, you know, it's only temporary, but I think what it comes down to is ultimately the idea of reducing the friction around it. And I think the idea of taking office hours, having a set time that is open, removes a lot of that friction, but I'm also sympathetic to the logistics behind it. I would be rotated. I'm sure all of us do not have the same schedules. And I think maybe there, I think there are ways to, again, remove the friction and invite people to these settings and really set expectations, right? Like, it, it would be hard for us to communicate to the town and just set, you know, this like background knowledge that we are reachable, no matter how, you know, all of our emails, our addresses, our phone numbers are, are on the internet where we are available, people can reach us if they want, and they do. But I think it's hard to kind of set that tone that we are available. And I think trying to find a way that does that, maybe not in this regular sort of one, two-hour scheduling. Like, I know that there's ways, this is just an idea, like there's software where you can set times you're available, people can just go on and book a time to meet with you. Something, you know, I think that gets us something similar without being as rigid, keeping everybody open, you know, just something like that.
And I'll, I'll say that I had a little bit more time, me time to think about this. So I had a couple of thoughts about it. I also love the idea of, you know, making sure that the public knows that we are available to them. And I think to Mr. Squidrito's point, like, sometimes there's a little bit of a hurdle in that, like, oh, I don't want to be a nuisance. I feel awkward reaching out. I just want to sort of chat through something. I don't know the best avenue to do that. And office hours remove some of those barriers because it's clearly a defined time for those not school committee comments, uh, school committee meeting comments, but comments maybe you want to make to a school committee member. But it made me think like something like quarterly office hours might be something that's actually doable. But then I was also thinking about whether or not the school committee can have a more public presence at things like opening soccer on Milliken Field, having a little table set up, we're not campaigning, we're not promoting anything, but we're there if any townspeople have something to say, being at a football game, you know, being at the farmer's market. I think there may be opportunities for us to be available and be in public places with name tags on. I'm sure, I mean, I don't know, I don't know if people know me, when I'm going to the supermarket, I miss the person, but I do that sometimes.
Do you have a bag and or a school cooler?
Yes. But that, that, you know, that exists, we are, we are people in this community, we grocery shop, we, we go to the, the dump, we visit the boutique, we do all those things. And then if we just make ourselves known in those places as well, that that might be another way to just sort of, I think it's almost like acclimatizing the idea of, of conversation, informal conversation, and that it's not necessarily necessarily for contentious or heavy business, but just to have conversations about education and the schools. So that was my thought, but I, I agree that we can kind of bat this around a little bit.
Can I float a test balloon? We could do something light, just say, a school committee member will be available a half hour before the meeting starts. Where we're already coming here, so like, somebody do rotation, you know, someone shows up five thirty, if you want to meet one-on-one, because coming to a meeting and being in public and presenting is a lot. But if someone's here for a half hour early, hey, do you want to bring something up before you come in front of the committee, before you, you go in front of public comment, which is a little bit different, someone will be here with you. And that may, you know, I already have this time carved out, you know, another half hour's a little harder with my, my schedule, but I could make it work once every five weeks, right?
I think maybe we come up with some creative solutions and maybe it's not just office hours, but maybe it's a mix of ideas going forward that we have linked to on our calendar page. I, I know what software you're talking about, Mr. Squidrito, and it's really helpful where you can kind of look and, oh, so-and-so's, you know, available at this time for this, this kind of thing. And that, that those things, things like that, we can definitely sort of to increase our the appearance of our openness, because I think all of us are open and committed and enjoy chatting with our constituents, that to be able to get that message across more clearly and make us, make it easier if it's, it's felt difficult to reach out.
Madam Chairperson, may I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Just to get this, this, a fairly simple ask, I feel, and, and note that this is the first time most of us have even thought about it because it's raised.
Yes.
Maybe we could keep it on the agenda for next time, people had a chance to let it digest and whether people feel like we can do it or not, at least we can probably concede. We've heard people's various ideas and like Mr. Evans just brought that up. If maybe we decide that we can concede some sort of pilot next time, just, I just, I, I just feel like I want to be able to at least take some action, even if it's no. You know, I don't want to just kick it down the road, we're not talking, but then in four months, we still haven't done anything. So if we just keep it on the agenda next time, then people will at least be able to anticipate that it's coming and, and be able to formulate some sort of position they have on it.
And I absolutely love the word pilot. And I think that, you know, we'll be coming into January, January, February, March, April, May, brings us to town elections, but allows for a nice pilot period to see what works and, and what doesn't, even with our best intentions. Thank you. All right, we will do that. Budget and finance with our monthly update from Ms. Owen.
Make it bigger for me, make it bigger for you. Okay, so this is just a monthly update through the, the month of October and a week or so into November. So we're kind of crossing over. The executive, executive summary is, you know, our school district has approved a total budget of twenty-four million, eight hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars plus a supplemented by a one-time allocation of one hundred and fifty that was in the amount for special education costs. As of today, our expenditures stand at about six point two million with a total encumbrance on purchase orders of eighteen, a little over eighteen million dollars, resulting approximately ninety-nine point six four percent utilization of our budget. The rate, the remaining projected fund budget is estimated to be about one percent of the original, original budgeted amount. So we are watching our budget very closely. The large encumbrance is mostly due to payroll, so we haven't come with that through the end of June. So we're sure that we have payroll encumbered. This also encompasses an F for utilities, which we have overest- I should say overestimated, estimated based on the overages we had in the past year in supplies and materials. Department leaders and administrators continue to exercise the judgment in spending. And we've been watching each requisition that comes through. Well, over a bunch of oversight remains robust in the year-end forecast is on track several areas for apples monitoring as have in the past. Want to emphasize that despite the viruses favorable salary savings and reduction in expenditures on the line items expected to offset overages. For example, in that encumbrance for purchase order, a salary set, some of them could possibly be offset from some of our revolving accounts. So there was recognized savings in there from salaries. The salaries themselves in the budget update were at ninety-nine point six percent FD snapping. As of today, we have two positions still currently open. We have a high school special educator, which is a one-year leave of veterans to fill. We also have a bus driver opening to fill a retirement that is upcoming after holidays. Due to the retirement, we anticipate final salary costs will come in slightly under budget as projected. And again, as I said, it's rolled into our encumbrances on our P O. Our utility costs are exceeding budget projections across all the buildings. Mike is one of our most significant financial concerns. FY twenty-six, we practically allocated in addition one hundred and eighty thousand towards utilities to help finalize FY twenty-five figures. Despite the adjustments, the budget categories, they remain a key focus area. If we have a mild winter, you'll, you may see that those utility costs go down. We won't know till after probably the winter months of exactly where we are or how over we may be in those budgets. In transportation, the recent adjustment in transportation fees combined with adding a, a new bus or two, one to replace the electric bus, has helped significantly with outsourcing. The multi, multi-use mini-bus is being used almost daily for athletics as well as our additional buses for field trips and late bus routes. And we have had one or two buses going just for basic maintenance. So the additional bus has certainly been helpful. The revolving fund balance is expected to grow through the end of fiscal year, sustaining positive balance in this account. Currently, the account holds positive balance of about ten thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And our athletics revolving account projects to remain in negative balance entering into the spring. Sports, we know, winter sports have started, we started, now there's about fifteen thousand that has been added. It is not calculated into this number, it has not been deposited yet into our, our, into our account. What we can see online that we have accepted those payments. So we're closely monitoring those expenditures. Similar to the utility costs, we're going to offset any overages with the savings that we've identified. To date, the deficit in the athletic revolving account has been reduced to one hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars to seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety. So it's, it's positive that we will certainly be in a positive balance before we end the spring season. Special education remains one of the largest, some budget categories as well. Vigilance oversight, we don't really have control of students moving in or out. Either relatively modest, modest, sorry, you're relatively modest shifts in enrollments or service intensity or program costs significantly can impact the financial position that we have in special education department. You know, consequently, we rely on these accounts closely throughout the year, very fluid account. Ongoing monitoring is monthly tracking of utilities, monthly tracking of athletics, including athletic transportation. We haven't had a good snapshot yet because we're only into the second month of what the savings may be from utilizing our new bus, already bus versus outsourcing. So hopefully by the next report, we'll, we'll see some savings there and can report on that. Ongoing monitoring of supplies and materials and continuing to track our special replacements and tuition. I just want to give an update of what grants we have received to date. You can see here, they're the same ones as we usually get. We don't get the opportunity because of just community-wise and society-wise. Like, we don't qualify a lot of the outside grants, we have the early childhood grant, we have the individuals with disabilities special education grant, which is one of our largest grants. We have title one grant, which we did not have last year, which has returned this year. We have the title two grant, and we also have the MECO grant. Grants from Massachusetts by additional funding to the school districts, primarily for specific initiatives such as program development, professional learning, equity efforts and mandated services. And then I've given you an update on our revolving accounts and what the balances are. And you can see almost all of our accounts are in a positive state, which is what we would like to see. You can see the athletics is at the minus seventy-seven, but that, that number is decreasing. And you can see kindergarten has brought in two hundred and sixty-two thousand to be used to pay. We have started utilizing that to pay fifty percent of our teachers in that program. So by the end of the year, that number will be increased and fully funded fifty percent of our given grant teachers. And our food service, because it's the beginning of the year, we're down to about a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. We haven't received any of our reimbursements yet for the first few months of school. So that number has significantly grown as our receipts come in. And then I just give you an update of FTEs, of where we were last year. We were at two hundred and twenty-eight point six. We did make significant cuts to staff in, in other areas last year and it shows here that we're down to two hundred and twenty-two point two. So it was definitely decreasing in staffing within the district. Conclusions, our district maintains overall physical responsibility at this point. Utility athletic costs continue to present a challenge to us and require our ongoing vigilance. All schools and towns must continue to be intentional about their spending needs, strategic savings and justice should in the fiscal year with some regional position.
Questions? Thank you. Mr. Dian?
Thank you. There's a couple of questions. One, on special education, prior reports would give us a, a number on where the special education budget was versus expenditures versus budgets. This one was more of a narrative saying we can watch it. Do we have a number of, of where our special education expenditures are versus what expectations are? I understand that they're not controllable. We have to just.
So I didn't attach the reports. Here, so you can see the special education, what the, what we budgeted, what we spent, what we've encumbered. Current is a shortfall of about ten thousand dollars. But we have not run in only the first quarter of circuit breakers as well, so.
Okay, th- this also shows special education, transportation is not in a negative scenario this year as well. So those are all, those are all positive intended. The, the other one, I, I just want to acquire, I know we've talked about this, but we run a perennial surplus in food service. Where does that money come from and why is it always a surplus?
Service. Currently, we don't really have. Currently, we don't really have a large surplus. I mean, $124,000 is not a whole lot. As high as three, four, $500,000, and that's due to the fact that lunch is free. So we get full reimbursement on every lunch for every child now. So federal and state government reimbursed us for all those meals before it wasn't fully funded.
But that would suggest that we wouldn't run a surplus. If it was just reimbursement for costs, then we would.
With some more, and also more students are buying. Well, not buy, but they're partaking in lunch.
So we have staff buying lunch, we have students buying second lunches. We have a lot of a la carte, which attracts.
Okay, so that's. So there's other revenue, there's other revenue drivers here other than.
Other than the reimbursement.
Okay, that's helpful. Because I mean, one of the things that I look at when I see this is that's our second highest one. It's perennially in the black. And this is an area where, you know, if we can't reallocate it and we have gone through upgrading our food service, you know, are we, should we look at lowering costs for those things for families? We normally talk about increasing fees, but if we are in a financially comfortable situations, I mean, where we have an opportunity to maybe, think about those fees in a different way. Just a thought, I'm going to have to even discuss it at this point, but that's, that's, I just worry about that. And not worry, I just remarked that we always seem to have a fairly healthy food service surplus. And I wonder if that's.
So I would just say two things with regard to that. First is that I think having a surplus should free meals stop being a thing is healthy because it would allow us to become a fully self-sustaining program. Prior, I don't know here, but prior to when school lunch was free for all in every other district I've ever worked in, they were perennially not making, having any surplus. So I think that's one thing. The other thing, we learned this last year, that we cannot sell a second lunch at a lower cost than what the reimbursement is from the state because we were, and we got dings on that, and so we had to increase it. So that would be one area where we don't have a lot of.
Yeah, but if we're like, and I actually don't know that I would charge for apples. Maybe we don't charge apples.
Those are the only places we would have.
Because that would knock on benefits of encouraging kids eat apples. Keep their dogs, or give them to their teachers, whatever they do to the apples. Thank you, that's all.
So I think the fact that these are revolving funds are important. This is important to point out where the whole point of these funds is that you collect a balance and you draw down that balance as you expend it. So for food service, as you said, we collect fees, we also get state funding, but we can't run that account negative, right? So, you know, let's say we have a, you know, food costs go up and we're a little bit behind, the state's a week behind on reimbursement. We need a padding there, that way the revolving fund always has a balance, so you're always going to see a balance. And ideally, you have a balance on all of these, like kindergarten is 262, but that's just, we haven't spent it yet. Like, that's what a revolving fund is, you put money in it, you spend it down. The only two, so my two questions are, for athletics, we're currently not actually spending that down correctly. We're just putting money in, budgeting for all the expenditures. And then what about transportation? You said we had a currently a positive balance of 10 to 27. That's just for today, are we drawing down from that fund right now for transportation expenses? That's been kind of frozen, it's all built into the budget. So we're going to roll over $10,000 into the next fiscal year, collect things and then collect, and then we can adjust our FY '27 budget for the fact that we're no longer carrying a deficit in revolving funds.
However, with transportation, we stopped collecting fees February or March. So you'll see that revolving fund grow.
Correct, but if you have. Exactly, so but if at the end of '26, we have a giant revolving fund balance, that's not really a surplus. It's just money that we haven't spent yet, not a service we haven't delivered yet. That's what I want everyone to understand is that it's not that we're collecting money and we're not doing anything with it. It's literally the money that we're going to spend to deliver a service.
Right.
Yeah.
And same thing with food services. Food service is 100% self-funded.
Correct.
We have to ensure we have enough for supplies and materials in payroll.
And the other thing, and this was brought up during a town meeting, but, you know, whenever we run on the municipal side, whenever we run a negative balance, it frees, it actually puts a hole in that amount of money on the municipal side. So free cash is held up. So like, if we can get ourselves $77,000 out of a hole in the revolving fund, that frees up $77,000 in free cash payment. So it benefits us if we have other expenditures not to be carrying negative balances on these revolving funds. So, thank you.
I just had a small question, and it relates to the paragraph about utilities. When you say that we're exceeding the projections, does that include the additional 180,000? So we're projected to exceed that as well, or, okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
You may see adjustment going into '27, of us asking for increasing budget.
Thank you, I have no questions. Thank you, Ms. Owen. We are now going to move on to finalizing the fiscal year '27 budget priorities.
Would it be okay with you, Chair Luskey, if we did the budget calendar first?
Sure.
Okay. I did some revision of some of our documents between last meeting and this meeting to make things just a little bit clearer. I actually have two, two things to share with regard to the calendar. One is a very detailed calendar for those who want to get into the weeds. And one is a budget process overview that is lined up by when things happen. So I'd like to share both and have them both be part of what we approve as a calendar, if that's okay. And it is a new format, trying to make it just a little bit clearer and a little bit more comprehensive. So things haven't really shifted in terms of what we do, but when we do them, it's shifted a little bit because I had to shift to accommodate from last week to this week. So changed some dates because of that. They also added in here our budget subcommittee meetings. And those of you who are on the budget subcommittee, you'll know soon that Jennifer is going to be looking to set dates all the way through the end of the year in the coming days, so that we can make sure that those are public and available for everybody. And so this is our current budget calendar. I will say that though this is our calendar, we are going to try and do some of the things ahead of some of the dates just because as the shift in town manager occurred with our new interim town manager, she is looking to move things up a little bit just for her planning purposes as well. So she and I had a great meeting the other day, and we're going to try and accommodate her as best we can, knowing that there's a lot of work to do on our end as well. But I think it's a, it's a positive move for all of us. So that's what the detailed calendar looks like. All right. So this is the overview, and this overview, we're trying to create a budget book this year that will house all of our budget information. And so the next documents you'll see will be part of that budget book, but they can also exist independently. And so for those folks who don't want to know every date in detail, this is the overview of what happens in the fall, the early winter, mid-winter, early spring, and then into the spring. And really wanting to make it clear that all families are available to come to any school committee meeting. We have a full budget hearing that happens in the spring before the vote happens. And that is something that we hold because we want people to come and ask questions. It is a full hour typically that is dedicated just to hearing questions from the public about the budget. And so we encourage folks as we start to present and prepare documents around the FY '27 budget that they come to school committee meetings, ask questions, come to the budget hearing, ask questions, provide commentary, because that's what will help you make decisions and ultimately vote a budget in the spring. So I would ask that if there are questions, I can add to them, and that, but there is a vote on the budget calendar.
Questions for Dr. Shannon?
Dr. Shannon, I don't see a school committee vote on the FY '27 budget on the calendar. I'm guessing it happens on, I'm guessing under this, it would be, it would be 318, possibly 41, 41's blank.
You know what, that's where it belongs.
Okay.
Let's catch.
And in addition to that, I would suggest, and maybe you have a good retort to this because you're pretty purposeful, but I would just, we just delete the time column of this. It's not necessary, and it just like makes it more crowded. And like, why do we need the time of day that this is happening?
I can tell you why, because right now the subcommittee times aren't on there, but they will end up being on there. I'm fine with taking the times off, but that was why, because.
Okay, no, I think that actually makes sense then. That makes sense, okay, all right. Like I said, I bet you have a retort to this. So, okay, thank you.
So just for the record, the vote on the 41 or 318?
It's the 41.
I will just continue to highlight that we really do want participation and participation as the process is unfolding, that that is when input on the budget is most helpful to us, the school committee members. And so there are all of these opportunities in addition to, as we just talked about, we all have our town email addresses or our district email addresses and our phone numbers on the school committee website, on the class of government website. And so please feel free to reach out if you have questions or comments as the budget process unfolds. We appreciate your engagement. All right, so looking for a motion to approve the budget calendar and supporting document of the FY '27 budget process.
So moved the caveat that we had the FY '27 vote to 41 slot, second.
Mr. Dian?
Hi.
Mr. Evans?
Right.
Mr. Squidward? Chair Luskey? I approve.
Thank you. All right, so I have changed up our budget priorities based on the last conversation, the last meeting. You'll notice that the format looks completely different.
Consistent branding.
It's going to be consistent with our new budget book. And so taking that feedback changed how things are presented, but also some content. The main priority for our FY '27 budget is really to maintain at least level service for our students. And then within our compass points, we have very specific priorities that are driven by the strategic plan and by our district goals. And so under compass point one for teaching, learning, and leading, we're looking to maintain our interventions and supports for students who are engaged in our MTSS process and to provide professional learning that drives implementation from project-based learning and other staff learning aligned to the strategic plan and the district goals. Compass point two around wellness, because we don't always know exactly what we're going to do because this year the goal is to work through what we need to engage our students and staff in better wellness. Our district priority will be to support new program structures and our professional development that increases belonging and align grading and homework practices in schools and across the district. Compass point three, which is community engagement, invest in systems and human capital that support and enhance community engagement and build financial structures to support community building events. And finally, under resources, to maintain appropriate staffing levels to rebuild the professional development budget, to enhance funding for curriculum and instruction, to provide ongoing and necessary repairs to facilities, and to commit to minimizing fees in a fiscally responsible manner. In doing this and in having conversations with some school committee members, we also talked about some assumptions that are need as we build these priorities. And so I would like to share that as well, which is a different document, so give me one moment to. Because as we decide what our priorities are, we are assuming certain things. And again, the first thing is that the assumption is that we want to maintain at least level service for our students. We are assuming that our interventionists, specialists, and counselors are essential to the academic success and wellbeing of all of our students. That professional development for staff is essential for meeting our strategic objectives, that our staff are exceptional and are deeply dedicated to our students' successes and wellbeing, that our community values small class sizes, course offerings at the secondary level that support professional pathway exploration, and building programs that allows for co-passet students to remain in co-passet schools, and that maintaining and improving our school facilities allows us to provide learning environments that are clean, safe, and inspire innovative learning experiences for our students. And finally, as a public school, we must continue to work to minimize fees being passed on to families. And so I present to you both as part of our budget priorities and would ask that you have any questions that I can answer and that there is a vote to approve the priorities with the assumptions made to me.
Mr. Dian, any questions?
Can you, I really appreciate how you've highlighted the top priorities, keeping level funding. Can you explain what that means? Because I think that's, it sounds pretty basic, but it is a huge statement, and it's very important.
And I want to clarify that I actually am promoting our priorities level service, which is very different from level funding.
Did I say level funding? Level service is what I meant to say, thank you.
So level service means that we go into FY '27, the '26, '27 school year with all of the same services that we currently have and can provide those same services to students next year. If we were level funded, because I think it's important people understand that as well, that would mean that we have the same amount of money for '26, '27 school year for FY '27 that we had this year, which means we would be going into FY '27 with a significant number of reductions. Because in order to have level service, we actually need an increased budget. So it's very important to us if we want to maintain what we have, that we have a level service budget.
And that includes every teacher, every specialist, every paraprofessional, guidance counselor.
Everybody.
And I think saying that's our goal, even though it will cost more. That's, I think, a lot of the sand that we hold and we're very proud of, I think. When we look at the town, we're holding everything. And I like that you put in the assumptions that the community values small class size is an assumption. As a parent, I think it's almost, you take it for granted, but it's an assumption. And that assumption does cost money because it requires us to have the amount of teachers we do. And if we want to be proud of the educational outcomes, the class sizes, the experience, we have to at least level service. So I like, that's the top thing, I think that's a good guiding principle for us going forward. So I appreciate it. I also like the new format, and I think it really shows clear thinking on where we're going. So thank you.
I have to agree. Thinking back to the last version of the priorities, as I reflected on it, I really understood it as a school committee member, as someone who came into this and, you know, caught up on everything that's happened the past year. But I think these documents, not only are they really effective for community members, but I think they're also effective for us as a committee as we have to go in March to select board and advisory, advocate for a level service budget. And I think taking that philosophy of trying to explain it to others is really important. Trying to explain it to others is really important. And that's that's part of why I wanted to like, I don't want to go on a tangent, but that's part of why I wanted to be here. I wanted to be. As a recent student, being able to go not just to community members, but to these boards saying, I I I can tell you I have this ethos that this is. Important to students. This matters in learning. This is what is effective. And I think taking. That philosophy with these, you know, with these outward documents that we have, I think is really important. Um. So I think. It definitely is a big improvement. I just really. You know, the more I looked at it and reflected on what we're working on, I really just didn't notice that difference.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Shannon. Um. I have no substance um. Concerns. It looks good. Thank you for the revisions. Um. I will not get into any, it's, you know, difficult for me to look at things. Paragraph sentences without having some sort of like, you know, want to share some thoughts. I would just, you're capable of doing as well. I just made one, one suggestion. I won't get into the weeds because I was I was reviewed last time for doing that. Um, consider some bullets so that it's clear that they're separate issue like, you know, saying like on the, for example, the budget priorities.
Yep.
It's sort of okay. You understand what I'm saying there. And then just if you can just give it as and put your English teacher hat on and just give it one more read and like, for example. The word learning is used three times in the same sentence in the first priority. Maybe there's some synonyms that we can use to make it flow a little bit better, but you I'll I'll leave that to you. Because this is the reason, the only reason I I would care about this because it's a it's a document can be published. So I feel like it should be a a fairly polished product. And you are more than capable of doing it on your own. So I'm just suggesting that, um, but I have no content uh suggestions. It looks great. Thank you for making every videos.
Thank you. Um. I have no substantive comments either, except for that I appreciate the. The format, the ease of use. Um, and really just I feel like the theme for tonight is increasing engagement and and making this sort of a multi-leveled. Um, document where um. Even a late person um who's just sort of developing some interest in school budgets um can sort of have some entry points that are really accessible. I think that's um a wonderful way to um. Help support that engagement and help to guide our work too. Um, it almost our assumptions serve almost as a mission statement um. For the the budget work that that we will do. So that's a great move. Um, so looking for a motion to approve.
To move. Second.
All right, there we go. Um, Mr. Dial.
Hi.
Mr. Evans.
Hi.
Mr. Squidward.
Hi.
Jim Lasky. And then finally, Dr. Shannon, um, capital budget prioritization.
Yeah. So um appreciated all of the conversation and comments from last meeting. I did take that back to our leadership team and we were able to continue to prioritize our. Capital requests. I also was able to have um an initial conversation with the interim town manager, which helped as well. Um, and then so today I'm going to share with you our next. Priorization list. Um, knowing that. We have a meeting coming up. I think Friday. Um, is a budget subcommittee meeting and we will have our liaisons from the capital planning board with us. Where we will make another round of prioritization um decisions. And then we'll be able to bring to you that first meeting in December, our final list where we would be requesting a vote. And so want to share tonight where we are at the moment. So. Color-coded. This evening. So our first two. Requests are our ongoing leases, our buses and our. Multi-use van vehicle. I guess that's what I should be calling it. Um, the next three requests are. Our ongoing requests that have a shelf life. So we have for three years. Been fortunate to have the support of the capital board to put in interactive boards. This would complete that process. It is year four of four. We also would be requesting year two of two for our security enhancements. And through conversation with the capital board last year. Um, because of our ongoing furniture replacement needs, we continue to put in a thirty-five thousand dollar request. For that furniture replacement each year. Um, still waiting. The folks were out from the vendor. Last late last week, looking at cameras with our IT department with our principals. And so anticipate getting that estimate any day actually. And so the only other in um conversation. With the. Sorry, with leadership is that we actually would be looking right now to move the performance risers forward. Um, and to put the art display boards into FY twenty-eight. And the instruments into FY twenty-nine. The visual arts department also wrote a grant for these display boards. So we're hoping that that can. Happen in maybe a different way, um, but that the performance risers are real. We also talked about the turf field fence being a priority because it's been something that's been requested for some time. Um. Putting potentially the athletic storage shed for FY twenty-eight. And then for FY twenty-nine, the permanent netting system for the turf field, but we also know that that could potentially be a request of the CPC. Um, we are still holding on clocks because we've not clocks and shades because we've not heard anything about pricing on those yet. Um, we know they continue to be a need, but without pricing, it's hard to prioritize them. Um, in Deer Hill Furniture upgrades, we're we're still holding on as well. So at this point. What you see. There is our current FY twenty-seven capital request prioritization. And. We will. There may be some shifts between now and the next time we meet, but that will be in conversation with um. Principals with the budget subcommittee and with the capital board liaisons. So we don't need a vote this evening. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any um. Just Mr. Dial. Questions, Mr. Evans?
Football upgrades. No, we didn't know with the twenty-eight. Did we get?
I'm waving on that.
Okay, because they are like.
They are. And I think they didn't answer. They were not at all touched during the um. Turf renovation. Um, they they turfed around them. And they were crooked then, from what I understand.
Okay, this is another thing. Always looking for someone else.
Yeah, no, they we could not blame them.
I hear the problem.
So.
Yes, uh, the instruments that's is that like faculty endorsed? Are they saying that that it can?
That's that came from, yes. And and I think they're also looking at some other.
Okay. All right. So that makes me less concerned. Um, and then just a suggestion. That maybe like after we decide on, we're not deciding anything right now, but some of these like, I feel like because they're they're. Um, concrete figures assigned to specific items, it might be worthwhile just to develop a. Donation. This to send out to families to say, hey, you know, no pressure, but just letting you know that we're. These this came from, this is from our capitalist that we didn't do this year. And if you feel strongly about the football upgrades and you have five thousand, I know I went on, but. You know, maybe, you know, maybe donation in your name or something.
We're allowed to do that.
Um, so we might want to do that with capital. It might be a, I don't know, we did.
Capital campaign maybe.
Right. Yes, exactly.
We have something too.
There's something on the website that you can make.
People really get it. First of all, realize that it's there.
No, I think capital. But it's just, you know, where it's, we've already sort of, okay, we prioritize these items. They're happening, but these are the future items we're looking for. If you have an interest in them and you feel like you want to donate. I mean, you never know if you don't ask, right?
Absolutely.
So, all right, but other than that, um, this looks great, by the way.
Thanks.
Love how you. Color-coded it.
Um, Mr. Squidward.
I don't really have anything else to add.
Maybe one more.
Yes.
Just so the 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 security cameras discussion, I know it's going to be a big ask and I know there's going to be a lot of questions. Um, I looked at the the school committee adopted a security camera policy, which is basically what the state recommended years ago, which just says we can do it. I would like this board to consider. We looking at that to have a sense of what. The cameras, what level of camera coverage? Is our goal as a committee versus expense versus goals versus society. Um, you know, so I I. Would would like to have some sort of discussion about getting that policy updated a little bit more um. Directive. So policy subcommittee. On policy.
We will.
I hope it's not me.
We'll kick that off. Starts with us. We'll get it. We'll get a date on the books.
And then also when we make a request, if we have the policy that the board has adopted, that will go a long way in making that a request. The, you know, uh, have a narrative behind it. So.
Thank you. Um, I only have a question about recurring CPS furniture at thirty-five thousand, whether or not that's a separate line item. Completely from the Deer Hill remaining office furniture. And and one is sort of student furniture and the other is is sort of. Other rooms or?
It is. Um, Deer Hill has been. Pretty much completely redone with the exception of a couple of office spaces.
Okay.
Um, and last year we shifted to start to prioritize middle school, high school. And so the ongoing really is to prioritize student classrooms now, the middle school, high school. Um, and so we've been looking at it as two separate requests if we needed to. If we decided to finish off Deer Hill first and use that thirty-five thousand in that way. Um, but some of the needs at the middle school, high school have felt like a higher priority at this moment.
Thank you. Uh, all right, and we don't need to vote. Are there any additional questions or comments? Unless, because we will vote. This is our second time through, so this this will be up for vote. Um, at our next meeting. Okay.
December third, is that? You can believe it.
All right. Um, do we have any reports from school committees, subcommittees or liaisons? Great. Um, I do not have any topics um not reasonably anticipated. We do not have any minutes to approve tonight. And we do not have reason to go into executive session. Um, so I will take a motion to adjourn. A second?
Second.
All right, go call vote. Mr. Dial.
Hi.
Mr. Evans.
Hi.
Mr. Squidward. Mr. McCallan.
Hi.
Jim Lasky. Hi, thank you all very much. Um, have a good night.